Make it hot. You're live. Good evening. Love to the town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 14, 2025. I'll call to order at 7:00 P. M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by a local access program. If there are anyone in the audience tonight that's recording tonight's meeting, being none, please write and join us with a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
This time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, administration, each of the planning board members, please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted a mic consent. First item on our agenda tonight is addition of section 14 Traffic Studies by law. The Auburn is going to by law adding regulations governing how a traffic study is conducted. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'll just give you a little bit of a background on this. Victulated as a citizen's petition in the spring town meeting. I don't think I heard that got to this board, but this is drafted and drafted in a well-tempered by law to regulate how two traffic sites. So Selectment is sponsoring this. This is going to be on the town meeting in two weeks. So we're looking for a recommendation to approve, recommendation of town meeting to whether they should approve or not with the city by law. Yeah, any questions on the second part, answer them.
So is there currently any guidance that this is replacing, or this is?
No, it's be buried in there.
So on what basis do our current traffic studies conducted then?
They are, just how the industry generally does traffic studies, it's very generally polygony do them. And then this boy can ask for, this DPA could also ask for specific things that they want to see in a traffic study. Kind of work that goes in. Not many towns have traffic site files. Think this is probably the first, at least in Southern West County most likely.
I had a question for the chair. On page three, it talks about future conditions should cover a five-year time horizon. How can you plan out what's going to happen in four or five years?
Can't specifically. It's kind of a general idea of what you think might be built. For example, going down Route 20 towards Worcester, you get the tier recent product sites. Probably it'll be built out within five years. So we took a impression from somebody about some more to do with traffic study on the end of 20 recently, and they were asking about potential development, and those are potential developments. So presumably that will change traffic flow five years from now. So you're kind of a bit of estimating and a little bit of institutional knowledge.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Adam, so in this one, I think I look at, which one is it? Page five. The design standards are there, but this does not give any indication on the real, actual traffic conditions, right? So this falls back on the standards by the state, you know, by DOT. But I think we've seen over and over that the numbers put up by the state are not in line with what we actually see on the ground. So is there any way we can add anything about reflecting actual traffic conditions?
Let me just ask this question. Accounting the standards, we could ask for that, what we want in addition to this. Anytime we have a traffic study that's required for, like any business.
Is that?
Like, you know, petways or whatever, you can ask for more.
Yes.
No, I was asking for more.
Okay. So this doesn't, this doesn't restrict us from not asking that, right?
Correct.
This is like the minimum we want to say.
I see, I see.
Any other questions? Any questions in the audience? Anyone may have a motion to close. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I made a motion to recommend or not recommend approval to the meeting.
I'll make that motion to recommend.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Uh, no.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Myself generally, aye as a vote. Second on the agenda tonight is petition of the town law to designate Whitman Bailey Drive, show on the plan prepared by Leonard Engineering Corporation entitled Windmill Estates, is April 8, 2015, recorded at the Worcester Ridge Street of Deeds. Plan book 56992, page 139, taking 50, 50 pages. The length of Whitman Bailey Drive would be approximately 960 feet. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself generally, an aye to vote. The hearing is now open. Are there any questions from the audience?
I have a question.
Uh, she's up here switching stairs.
Yeah, switching on the mic.
Yeah, get your mic, one of the chairs, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, I'm here to address Whitman Bailey Drive becoming a public road in the town of Auburn. I would like to be, I'm sorry.
Say your name again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kristen Henderson, 17 Whitman Bailey Drive in Auburn. I would like to begin by asking the individual board members if you agree with the statement that your chairman made at the last meeting on September 23, minute 49 and 37 seconds. And I quote, absolutely no way the town will take the road over even if it's built to town standards. We do have some more information that we had gathered since last meeting. However, if you all feel this way, then I don't think there's any point in wasting our time or yours.
Ask away.
That's what I'm asking. Do you feel the same? The chairman said absolutely no way the town will take the road over even if it's built to town standards. Is that how you all feel?
Are you talking about just the road based on and the road, the depth of the road and the way it was constructed and?
Yeah, that road was constructed as a private roadway, right? We don't know what standards it was built to. I see the reports that Helgeson comes in every year, videotapes the sewer line. I don't know what the services look like. They can videotape the services too, and I don't think that's been done. I don't think the drainage has been videotaped. As far as what you need to do to bring that up to town standards, that's between Windmill Estates, HOA, and the DPW.
Respectfully, your comment was even if it's built to town standards, we are not. So that's what I'm asking. I understand that you-
I don't think I said "we." I think I may have said, there's no way it'll be accepted as a town road. I don't think I mentioned the rest of the board. I can't speak for the rest of the board.
Exactly. No, you said absolutely no way the town will take the road over even if it's built to town standards.
In my estimation.
Well, you didn't add that, but, you know, I just want to know if the, if the entire board feels that way, because if it is, then, you know, we, there's no sense proving to you all the different things that we have and we've done and the plans we have if you all feel the same way. Because if we meet every single town standard, your chair is saying that we're still not going to be a public road.
I just want to ask, when you say you meet every town standard, you know, we already have that the road was, town standards, I believe, is two, on asphalt is two and a half and one and a half, Adam?
Correct.
And we have that this road was constructed to two inch and one inch. So you'd have to basically dig it all up. And that doesn't include what the underneath might be like, because we have no knowledge of that. And-
I understand that you're concerned about the-
And it was one, excuse me, it was one of the waivers that we granted, with about four or five waivers here, was one of the waivers that we granted to the developer because of that reason. It was specific that he wasn't going to do it to town standards. I'm not sure if John meant every single little thing, but just some of these certain things. It's kind of broad-based maybe comment, but.
Are there items that are more important than others to you? Like, again, if you feel the same way he did, or that, how he spoke, it doesn't make sense for us to try to prove every little thing. But if you, if you're open to hearing what we found out and letting us continue down this path, then we are very interested in doing that.
Sure.
Go ahead, John.
So I think we're being asked as a board to make a decision on a very specific question. And each of us will come to a determination based on perhaps a different set of factors. So I understand your question, but frankly, I don't think it's relevant, because we each, when it come, we have discussion, and then we take votes, and we each take a vote based on our belief on what the right decision is. So I don't think there's ever been a perception that any word that any one member of the board says represents the whole. We each speak individually, and then we vote. So I don't think, I understand the question, but frankly, I don't think it's relevant. That's my view.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ma'am, my disappointment is that when you were here last year and this gentleman was making his case, there really haven't been any improvements done. Nothing has been done to improve your lot over there to make it more acceptable to the town, from what I've seen.
I would disagree. Well, so-
And that's disappointing.
You had asked us, you had told us, actually, that we had no lot lines. And so we went and we have a lot that is signed by the town clerk, signed by the Auburn Planning Board, and at the Worcester County Deeds.
Registry of deeds.
Registry of deeds, showing the lot descriptions, that it is for duplexes, because they do have two addresses on each one. And we keep hearing that this document doesn't exist. But it's here, and we have separate lot lines.
What's that now?
It's a date of the plan.
Uh, let's see. Approved under subdivision control law 2916, maybe?
By your other sheet.
Other, this one?
Yep.
This one has the same, 2916. This one says February 10, 2016, that the town clerk signed it.
You see in the planning board signatures on that, correct?
I do, yes.
Because that's not for approval, it becomes public street.
No.
That's an approval for the project, period.
It was, it showed lot lines. That's all that I was trying to prove with this document is that we have been continually told that we do not have homes on individual lots. This clearly shows individual lots, and it has lot sizes.
Technically, you don't, because you're a duplex on one lot. Correct?
We have a duplex on one lot.
You have two homeowners on one lot. That's not individual. That's, it's two people on one lot. So there's no property line between the middle of duplex, separating yours or theirs.
Okay. Can you explain to me why that matters?
Well, there's a requirement in town for 100 foot tires per each home, and there's a requirement per number of square footage. I don't think you can either divide that in half. I haven't looked at the plan, maybe I don't scale it out, but that's my guess. There's a reason why the developer made those duplexes instead of individual homes, because it was cheaper for him. And then he stuck you guys with those.
So you're saying that the lot size does not meet?
I don't think so.
Okay. So based on information, the average lot size in Auburn is .355. And on Whitman Bailey-
That has no bearing on the case. No bearing. The average lot size, well, it has no bearing on the case. You have to go by the standards now, what is required for a lot. Because you're changing a whole thing now, because it wasn't a public road. You guys all signed on to be a private road. Now, one of your statements that you made was that you guys pay taxes like everybody else.
Which we do.
Right, I agree. But if we make that town a public road, why should I bury any of your costs when you signed off to take care of the road yourself? You're putting the burden on everybody else in this room, not just you.
So I don't feel that we would be a burden, because we already pay the taxes. So we pay the taxes for town government, we pay the taxes for the schools, we pay the taxes for everybody else's road, we support local commerce. Like, we are part of this town.
And you say you are.
You kind of do when you call us you people.
When you say, when you buy a property, knowing, like, knowing that this will be a private road forever, because that is stated in the paperwork here, it'll always be a private road. Now you want to reverse the tables and have the town take it over, when number one, it wasn't built to town standards, we already know that. No improvements have been made up there. I mean, there's no, there's no granite curbing list or catch basins. I can go on around. We don't know what the pipe looks like under the road. You always look at the inside, you know what the outside looks like. Inside can look great, but the outside can be all decayed. So you don't know. So we don't know. I don't know if it's PVC pipe in the ground there. I don't know if it's AC pipe in the ground. I don't know if it's ductile line. I have no idea.
Well, that's why we were going to get an inspection, so that we could show you what was there.
It's only going to tell you what, you're going to TV the inside of the line, correct?
You know-
I don't expect, I don't think you guys are going to dig up your road.
We are not going to dig up our road.
No.
I, I am having a little bit of trouble, because you say everything very definitively, like you are 100% sure.
About what?
About everything. Like, as you speak to me, you're saying, oh, we don't know, you know-
I'm particularly sure that I don't know what the outside of the pipe looks like, and neither do you.
Okay. But you, you know, you also told us we didn't have lot lines, but you didn't explain to us that, so every duplex in Auburn is what? Is not on a private road?
A lot of them are.
But they're not all on private roads. So does that mean they don't have a lot line? If it goes around the entire building?
Generally, when they do the duplexes, then they do what they call cluster housing, like you're doing down off of Vinyl Street. It's the same scenario. It's a duplex, I don't know, right? And it's the entire area. And that's going to be a private road forever and ever and ever. We would not accept that.
Yeah.
In order for us to accept that as a public road, I believe, is that it would have been had been individual units, individual lots that all came up to the standards of the town, square footage, furniture, all that stuff.
Okay. Well, again, I would disagree with your definition of cluster housing. I take offense that you think that the houses on Vinyl are similar to the houses on Whitman Bailey. We, we are a subdivision, but one of the definitions is they have smaller lots. And our lots are .306 acres, where the average lot is .355. I would argue that the definition says that the lots are smaller, but they have common areas. The only common area that we have is inside of our cul-de-sac, which, you know, it says that it has two or more principal residence, residential buildings on a site. We have one building on each of our sites. Like, I don't, if we don't have pathways, we don't have amenity areas, we don't have maintenance areas that are shared. We have a private road, and we have, you know, two units per lot. I don't believe that it is a cluster. And if you're making your decision based on cluster housing-
I'll give you an example of what cluster housing is considered, as on Vinyl Street. It's a duplex on each lot.
Okay. We're on Whitman Bailey. So I don't really want to argue the points on Vinyl.
Did you say the lots were .3 acres?
And, let me just see here.
Oh, 15,000?
.3061. And so the entire lot is .612, because it goes around both units. If you were to divide it, because it's a duplex, then it would be, you know, the average lot in Auburn, according to this website, was .355, and we're .306. Not a whole lot of difference.
This was done, thank you, on the open space residential, Adam?
Correct. That was a special-
Which the lot size can be small, but.
Yeah. The idea and the subdivision was, to the chair, kind of put to the side because the open space, special permit was the last approval, and that kind of made the subdivision go away. There were elements that were transferred, but the open space was the final permit for that project, not the subdivision. And with an open space plan, there's usually shared land. That's quote-unquote conservation land.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, just to explain my thinking on this. So as, as the chair said as well, in my view, when the development was built, and when individuals purchased the homes then or subsequently, they did so with an understanding that there was a private road, and that there would be some cost associated with that. So in a sense, that's baked into the value of the home and the cost of homeownership. By seeking to change that from a private road to a public road, what you're doing is you're transferring liability from yourselves to the town. So what you're asking is us to recommend that the town assume a liability. And basically, there is an element to which it's a transfer from other people in the town to you. Now, I don't know what effect that will have on your property values. I don't know if subsequently, the property values will increase, because now there's no longer that liability and that associated cost. So there is a benefit that's going to derive to the residents of that road. I would be comfortable with that decision if I saw that there was some benefit to the town, if this were, for example, a critical piece of infrastructure, which the town had an interest in maintaining to a certain standard. But given the layout of the area, the only people who will benefit from this becoming a public road are the residents. So I, I don't begrudge you making the request. I can understand why you're doing it. But from my perspective at least, I'm looking at what's in the interest of the town as a whole. And given the fact that when the houses were bought, they were bought with the understanding that this was a private road, and that was very clear at the time, I don't see a rationale other than charity, frankly, for us to recommend making a public road. And that's not what I think our responsibility, our responsibility is to the town as a whole.
So I, I had some numbers here, and I think in my different versions, I have lost the number, but I believe that the town had roughly 100. It was maybe 110 miles of road, and Whitman Bailey is 960 feet. So it is not a heavy ask for, for our neighborhood. Again, we are seniors. We are, you know, we have Army veterans, we have Navy veterans, we have retired Marines, we have teachers that teach from kindergarten to college. We have lawyers. These are not people that took this on lightly. Like, we wanted, we have people that graduated from high school, that, from Auburn, that live in our neighborhood in their 70s. Like, this is our community. We, we support the local businesses, we pay our taxes, we pay our sewerage, we pay our water bill. And, and I understand that the developer did not go through every step that he should have to go public. But what I'm asking for is to look at it and see, again, you know, we keep hearing that we don't have documents, but yet you can state that we absolutely don't meet the requirement for the TAR. Like-
If I could, but this gets to my earlier point, that I'm making my decision based on a different criteria. I've not raised those specific points. For me, though, it's, it's a matter of principle and precedent. So by your logic, then, we should make every private road in the town of Auburn a public road and assume that responsibility, on the assumption that everyone else who lives on a private road is paying their taxes, paying their water bills, being good citizens of the town. So in a sense, again, you're asking for special treatment for a group of citizens within the town of Auburn, that if we were to recommend approval, then I don't know what standing we would have to deny any other request from any other private road now or in the future. And we would then be incentivizing developers to come into Auburn, to present developments with private roads, with an expectation by them and future residents that eventually the town would take that over. So I just don't see a compelling argument from the town's perspective in terms of the town's interest. I can totally understand why you would like to do that. And frankly, everyone in the development, if they don't feel that it's in their interest to live in a house with a private road, then they're free to move to a place where they're living on a public road. I mean, this is, you know-
Right. But public roads are, you do have waivers, you do have concessions, you know. There are things that are done every day that, you know. So what we're asking is if there are specific things that have to be met, we would like to know. We don't, we don't want to have to, you know, do every tiny thing. Like, you know, the, the DPW has, you know, their set of concerns, you have, I, I, again, never once did you say in two years that it would be impossible for a duplex to have a lot plan. Never once did you say that, because-
So what?
But why would you just say you don't have individual lots?
When this started, when the first was left for the board, we all knew the road was not the standard. Nothing was inspected out there for the pipe by the town, for any of the pipes, whether it be water, sewer. And the water's private, by the way. You have it as a public water service. It's not as private. It's owned by all the water district. Town doesn't own a water district.
Okay.
So it's private. And you have the election under town that I don't know was inspected. None of that was inspected by the town. So when this first came up, I said you- So, when this first came up, I said you'd have to probably rip up the road, redo the road, redo the sidewalks, redo the lighting, all this stuff, but I said it would cost you millions of hours to do it. And it kind of went away. And then, now you're back. It's the same argument that I, as I said back then.
But we went away because we came back with information that you had brought up. And we, you know, we have a plot plan that we were told didn't exist. Now, you're telling us this isn't good enough, you know?
But in your deed overall, it kind of refers to one lot for all the houses.
Okay. And again, I guess I don't understand why that's an issue. Because let's just say for argument's sake that Windmill Estates owns the entire lot. That means that you have one owner to deal with. You have, you have our board, like, if something were to happen, or you don't have 26 individual houses. Why wouldn't that be better if, if you had something in the sewer line or whatever that you didn't have to go to the individual person? You had Windmill Estates that was held responsible for that entire parcel.
Yeah, definitely.
But you're saying it's not good enough? It's not right on a public road?
Well, if you're responsible for everything, then it's a private road. If you're not responsible...
No, if we're responsible for the land around the road, like, if it were a public road and one entity owned the land, why would that be a bad thing?
To me, it's, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing for the town. I'm just saying that the roadway is what we're concerned about, your lot lines. I mean, you don't even have a right-of-way in there, I don't believe, on your plans of what the right-of-way of the road is. I think your right-of-way ends at the curb, and that's not the way the town would do it. Now, it'd be a year long, well into year long, on both sides. Every time there's a roadway built, there's a right-of-way. So, if you have a 24-foot road, you're going to have a 60- or 80-foot right-of-way that's owned by the town. You maintain the grass, you shovel the sidewalk, the town still owns it.
And how do you know that we don't have that?
I just sit on the plan.
The plans that were too small to read last time?
Well, I've read the plans this time, but I mean, they're kind of hard to read, number one, but number two, as far as your ASB plan, it's not an ASB, for one. You only show the planned view. You don't show any profiles, you don't show any contour lines, you don't show locations of the houses, you don't, you don't show how many services go to each duplex, whether it be water or sewer. I can almost guarantee, I'm not positive, you got one sewer line going each duplex. Because your sewer bill is based on your water bill. I don't know if you knew that, but that's how it's based.
I don't. I didn't know that, and I'm not sure I believe you, but...
Go ahead, call the water department, call the sewer department. Believe me, I know. You know how I know? Because when I water my lawn, my water bill goes up, and so does my sewer bill. If I don't water my lawn, my sewer bill stays low, and my water bill stays low. So, I know it's based on the amount of water you use.
Okay.
That's a fact.
All right. Is it a fact that the ladder truck did not go around Whitman Bailey Drive?
Don't know. I never went up and surveyed to see what the diameter of the cul-de-sac is.
Yeah, last, last meeting...
Has anybody else?
Yeah, last meeting, you stated without a doubt that that truck was not here.
I drove up there, I didn't think it could make it around there.
They came up, and they did drive. So, that's why I tend, the ladder truck came up, and the fire chief came up.
What was that?
Do we, do we have the date on that, John?
A day or two after your last meeting.
Yeah. And they were nice enough to come up. Anyway, I guess this meeting didn't go as well as I had hoped. I would like to respectfully ask that you could table your recommendation because we have a meeting with the DPW selection and town manager next week, and I would...
I believe, no mistake, Adam, that this is the recommendation. Either say yea or nay on town meeting.
Correct. And for the chair, this boy has a meeting again before town meeting, so this is your only chance to, you have to take a position for state rules.
Tonight?
Yeah, we can't tell you, we have to say yea or nay. Recommend it to the town, take it as a rule, or say no.
They still could, in the future, come back at any time if they want.
Yeah, they can all, I don't think there's any restriction to come back.
No. But I think, as far as I'm concerned, the road is probably the main condition. There's seven waivers that were granted to the developer here, and it's just our key to how we normally accept any roads. And the thickness, it's predisposed to breaking down just because of its thickness, plus we don't know what the under preparation was. Along with that asphalt depth that the town states, two and a half and one and a half, there's also an underneath preparation that...
Right, we have people working on...
That there's X amount of gravel and that. Well, I think we talked to you last time about...
You did, and we've gotten closer to getting that information. We've just had a lot of roadblocks trying to get the information, but we understand that you don't want to take over a road that is in ill-repair or that could...
Well, it's not that it's in ill-repair maybe at this time, it's that it could become in ill-repair. It's not that old yet, and it's so wet up there. I mean, most of us know that just by being here all our life. It's just wet and...
Right, and we're told that, you know, that the town did make him go down further, but we don't have proof of that yet, so we're working on that.
Yeah, because we don't have any of that.
No.
What is your proposal to find out what the depth of the asphalt and gravel is? How do you guys plan on figuring that out?
We are in contact with the installer and...
You mean the contractor that built it, the developer?
No, 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 the contractor who, the paving contractor, that would have their plans as to what they did.
A lot of times, the paving contractor won't deal with the gravel. That's all done before he gets there. He wants to come in and lay down the asphalt, and you're done.
Okay, well, then...
There's only one way to find out. It's either dig a hole or do borings.
Do a core sample, because he could say that he did X but never even did it.
Correct.
And we would be willing to do a core sample if we thought that was going to appease the board.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to see some in several, several different spots, you know, not just...
I understand that, but every single time we've come here, we've gotten more and more things that have been added to the list. So, if it were really the core sample, then that is something that is doable. Is a million-dollar road renovation?
Getting that core sample.
No.
Excuse me, Adam, do they have a copy of those waivers that were granted?
Yeah, they should. If you don't, I can send them.
Okay.
John, I have questions.
Yes.
If there are, say, you know, I mean, to John's point, if there are, if the road today is not in standard with what the city, what the town would want, would you have any intention to upgrade it to that standard, to the required standard?
I think it would depend on what it would take, and we would, I don't think we would do it unless we knew that the town was going to take it over. I mean, if your chair's estimate is correct and it's a million dollars, then absolutely not. However, you know, we feel like if we could do a core sample, and the core sample shows it, but again, every time we've come, we've, different things have been added, and there's a lot of different, like, entities in the town of Auburn. So, we need to make sure that who wants what, and, but yes, we would like to be part of the town fully.
To John's point, I think the challenge is that once we, you know, if a private developer comes in, decides that they want to keep a private driveway, and then, you know, takes some time, and then pushes to convert it to a public access road, then it sets a precedence, right? And we don't, clearly, then becomes a standard that we'll have to then challenge ourselves. Like, that violates what we have and the bylaws that we follow. So, I think that's where the complication is, right? It's not, it's not that, you know, we can flat-out say that this is never going to be a public road. It's just that the standards have to be consistent across all the roads that we have in the town, right?
Right.
So, if you are, you know, upgrading your road, your roadway, to meet the standard along with all the DPW requirements, you know, based on their implications, the fire, you know, there are a lot of these steps that would have to be addressed, and if those are all checked in, then I think there is a pathway. But that's a longer step, it's a challenging task.
Right. And that's what I was asking, if you would be willing, if it was, because, again, I understand that you don't believe that the road was built to standards, but we haven't seen anything that shows that.
Can I read you the waivers?
Sure.
Okay. As far as the paving goes, pavement thickness of four inches HMA laid into two courses of two and a half by, or an inch and a half finish. Request waiver to provide three inches laid in two courses of two inches and one inch finish. Already below the town standard.
Okay, but you granted the waiver?
Yeah, because it's a private road.
Because it's an open space residential neighborhood.
And it's a private road, right?
We let it, we let that happen.
We didn't grant the waiver.
Well, you, who granted the waiver?
Probably the DPW, I don't know. This is way before my time on the board, so...
Okay.
The board at that time...
The board, I think, who knows?
Board of directors, okay. So, the waiver that was granted.
It's still missing needed as a private.
Yeah. Granted curbing at street radius less than 100 feet. Request waiver. This require modified KIC code. Curbing is proposed, except granite will be provided at the entrance radius. I'm not sure if it was granted at the entrance or not. It was an update, but I didn't actually look for that.
Yeah.
There isn't any, right?
No, no, but again, that's pretty easy to put in. Joanna explained why the plows need that, and it made sense.
Sidewalks. Request a waiver to, for the requirement for sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. Sidewalks will only be provided on one side only, which that's what's up there, one side only.
Yeah, but when we explained to Joanna that it went all the way around the cul-de-sac, she didn't seem to have an issue with it. So, I'm not sure if the DPW has different requirements than the planning board.
For the chair, all the requirements are in the subdivision regulations. These are the board's regulations.
I think the road is the biggest issue. A lot of those things, you could probably add some of the granite in the right spots wherever John would think it because that's the business he's in, and, but the road is the, is the biggest thing, that, for me anyways, I don't know if it's for the other members, but is that it's not the town standards, and you'd have to, you'd have to know, first of all, what's under the base, and a pretty good representation of all of it. And then, the inch and a half and two inches, if the base was perfect, I don't know what they could do, maybe grind all the top and then redo the asphalt to the thicknesses required, but then they'd be raising it up, they'd have to remove millings and, you know, it could be done, but it's...
To make that town standard four inches thick without raising the grade, you have to pulverize the road.
Yep.
That's full-depth polarization, it's called...
Probably remove some.
You have to remove all that stuff to bring it down. Now, you're going to be below the amount of gravel that's needed, so now you need to get all that gravel down below and put another foot in, and then go to your two and a half and inch and a half. And that's not cheap. And then, we still want utilities out there.
Have you ever talked to the developer and asked him any questions?
Yeah, he was helpful from behind the scenes, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've talked to him. We'll, we'll keep doing our homework. I appreciate your time.
I appreciate you coming in here and trying to get a public road, I really do. And I understand your dilemma, I really do. But you did sign on that it was a private road, you bought your home, correct?
We did.
What made you think it would change? Just because you're getting older and you don't want fixed incomes and all that? It's called plan ahead, not plan ahead.
No, I believed that, based on the documents that we had, that we followed every single town requirement that...
That's not the question I asked you.
No, because I thought that if I'm living in a community, in a town, I thought that we could change it.
Did you think you could change it when you bought the house?
I don't know that I thought that much.
How long have you been there?
Six years.
Six years. So, when you bought it, you definitely knew six years ago that it was a private road?
I did. Not all of our neighbors did. I did speak to somebody, but...
It's in your deed.
I understand that, I understand that, but, again, we have very intelligent, we have lawyers that live...
I didn't say you're not intelligent. What I'm going to try to tell you is your lawyer didn't do his due diligence to tell you that, or the realtor didn't do their due diligence to tell you that.
No, I knew that, okay? What I'm saying is that we have a resident, a resident that did not know that.
I'm sure you have more than one that didn't realize it when they bought the house.
Right. But again, things change.
I'm not faulting them, I'm faulting the people that sold you the place.
If nothing changed, then we would never have construction, we would never have growth, we would never have progress. I am, I am looking to hopefully change the board's mind eventually. I don't think it happened tonight, but we'll keep trying.
So, for me, it's, again, I said, it's very, it's very simple. To change my mind, you would have to convince me that there's a net plus for the town in doing this, that the benefit that the town would accrue by taking over this road would outweigh the liabilities. So, it's a cost-benefit analysis.
You realize this is 960 feet and over all of the town.
So, my assumption is that the reason you and others are pursuing this is because you see a financial benefit to you in doing this.
I do not.
You said your road was at 950 feet?
60.
According to your plan here, the waivers are 850.
I saw that.
Really?
But, Adam, the thing's at 960 when we were looking at it this morning, but...
But, no, I do not see any financial gain. I see that, I've been down a lot of private roads that are in disrepair after a certain amount of time, and I also see that I, as a development, we are not qualified to run a road.
But I guess my point would be, if you wanted to maintain the road to the standard that you want, there would be a financial cost involved in that, and you don't want to assume that cost, which is, to me, understandable. But what you're asking is the town to assume that cost. So, you're asking the town to take on a liability, and you've not demonstrated to me what the benefit to the town is. If, and there could be limited circumstances in which, so, for example, if there was a short stretch of private road, and then there was something major the town wanted to do on this side of that road. So, having that road be a public road and ensuring its standards, et cetera, added to an item, I could make an argument, then, yes, it's worth the cost to the town because there's a benefit to the town. In your case, I just don't see why it's the town's benefit, why I, as a member, as a citizen of Auburn, living in another part of town, why I should assume, or any of my neighbors or anyone else in the town, should assume any liability or any additional cost to benefit the people who live on that one road.
My argument would be that we pay the same taxes that you do, and we pay in, and again, we're 55 and older, so, yes, not everybody has kids in school anymore.
So, I'm 55 and older, and I had a tree in my backyard that needed to be cut down. Should you have helped me pay for that private tree to be cut down in my backyard? Or was that my responsibility? Because when I bought the house, I knew that I was responsible for maintaining my property.
I know, but I think a tree and a road are quite different.
Not in principle, it's private property. You're asking the public to take on responsibility for private property, to transfer private ownership to public ownership.
Right. And again, it's miniscule. Right. And again, it's miniscule in the grand scheme of the town. I don't know how many private roads we have. Again, you've got other people behind me. We need to move on, but...
As far as your taxes go, have you made that argument to the town?
I don't want to.
Why not?
Because we...
It'll go up.
Yeah, no. Because we want to be a part of this town. We want, I support all the local businesses in this town. I, you know, that's how I was raised. I don't want to, you know, we voted for the fire in the park. We voted for the school. Like, it's, that's how you keep a growing, thriving town. You have to support that town. So we're not looking to cut taxes. And, and yes, I apologize. In the grand scheme of things, I am looking for our reserve money to go to our buildings and not to our road eventually. Immediately, I'm not looking, you know, if we could take and still do our own plowing, we would love that. Because again, our contractor knows who leaves when, you know, who needs to be done first. They're out there. We have our...
Who plows it now?
PJM landscaping.
And then you all get together and pay them through the...
Well, our associate, yeah, our HOA. It's in our budget. Yeah.
And so that private contractor is still, and will be this one to plowing it.
Absolutely. And even if it were to be taken over, I had talked to Joanna about that because the town hires private contractors to plow all the time, but she wasn't exactly sure how it would work.
Can't do it.
They can't specifically hire him just to come to Whitman and Bailey because he knows...
No, no. What I was saying is, because he's going to be doing the driveways, he's going to be doing our walkways and everything else, that, and she said, well, if he, you know, damages something. And I said, well, then he comes, you know, he's responsible to Whitman and Bailey at the time. So it's, it's more about the long term, 30 years from now. Well, in five years, we've paid a million dollars in taxes. In 30 years, multiply that out. Again, we're not...
You're talking about the whole development, a million dollars in taxes, not just yourself?
No.
I was going to say.
Yeah, no. I did just get my tax bill, though. But, you know...
Didn't we?
Again, yeah. Again, it's a, it's a miniscule amount for the town. I understand that you would be setting a precedent. And that does sound a little scary to me as a, as a businesswoman, that, I do understand that, and I appreciate that comment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What other major costs do you have besides plowing?
Our major costs are landscaping, plowing, my treasurer. Can you think of what our major, I mean, you know, we had to do a cleanup through Helgerson because some stuff got under the road.
The drains and the sewers.
Yeah, the drains and the sewers. We had one. We don't have a lot because we're a newer development. You know, the inspections are not a heavy lift right now. It's, it's basically landscaping and plowing. And, and again, our reserve fund because we want to be a healthy, have a healthy reserve.
Doesn't your HOA cover the outside of your house and your roof, but not the inside?
Yes. But we have our insurance for the inside.
Right. What I'm saying is...
Insurance is probably a cost, too.
What cost is it?
No, no, I, but like a major cost in our budget would be our insurance, landscape and plowing are our major expenses.
But the landscaping you'd have anyways, no matter where you live.
Well, we'd still have plowing. We wouldn't have maybe the street if you didn't allow that, but we'd still...
You'd do your own driveways. You'd assume that in most places the town plows the roads.
Absolutely.
You wouldn't have that.
No, we would have, you know, and a lot of the neighborhoods have to do their own sidewalks. So we, you know, the sidewalks, the driveways, we plow to the, the gas lines so that they can get in. And we do the front porches because again, we're elderly. So, you know, we do, we take care of all that for our residents.
Other than you did do a wonderful job, as I said last week, of presentation.
You did.
Even, I mean, they should be paying you.
Is that come out of the HOA?
Yeah. Today was a little easier than last time.
On your waiver request, the second waiver down actually says, request waiver of 800 foot roadway limit in favor of 850 foot roadway due to topographic features, wet land advantages, and to allow access to more than 10 locks. According to this, it's 850. I actually measured it myself, but they're saying that's a waiver.
Is that a concern, whether it's 960, 850, or...
That's a question for the DPW. Because they're the ones that really regulate the length of the road. We had that problem with Eastland Partners over here on the other side of town, opportunity to load their whole development. They wanted to do a dead end. It was too long, so they had to shorten it up.
Okay. Well, Joanna, we do have, she is coming out with a engineer. We just haven't got that scheduled yet. She is working on that. Joanne from the DPW is coming in.
Yeah, I know. What's she going to do?
She just said she was going to do a site inspection for us.
Okay. She's an engineer, so she needs to bring someone with her.
I believe that's what she said. She was waiting on one other person, and then they were coming out, so.
I don't know what she has planned for a site inspection. I have no idea.
Right. Well, I will ask her this question about the road length because if it's an issue, we'd need to know that.
So further down the road, I'm not going to ask you your age, but after a certain age, if you make a certain amount of money in town, less than a certain amount of money, you get a payment on your taxes, which means you pay less tax. I'm just letting you know.
Jeez.
Yeah, I'm just going to go ahead. Good luck, guys. Nice try. But unfortunately, well, I have to close the hearing and I have to take a vote, so.
Okay.
I will congratulate you on your presentation. I will congratulate you on your persistence. But it is what it is right now. And until things, someone tells me I have to change my mind, hire up in the town, then I think it's going to stay this way. But we'll, like I said, close the hearing and make a vote. This is not whether or not it could ever become a public road. It's whether or not we can recommend this approval for the town meeting that's coming up next month. That's it.
Yep.
You're not done. I just wanted to know.
I plan to be at the town meeting.
Oh, if you do. I mean, I can blame you.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Aye.
So what's your meaning of the vote? May I motion to approve this petition for the town meeting to approve, for the town to accept? Being done, may I vote to disapprove or nay for this proposal for the town meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Joanna?
Favor the motion, yea.
Go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
So, Jimmy's aye as a vote. And what is the vote? Just approve the motion, that's all. So what's your vote? Your name?
My vote is yea in favor of the motion to disapprove.
Okay. Same with you.
I say...
Just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, disapprove.
Next on the agenda, the applicant Singular Wireless requesting site plan approval under section 9.3.11 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for wireless telecommunications facility at 282 South Street, Auburn, map 25, parcel 23. They have requested a continuance. May I have a motion to approve the continuance?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Joanna?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Aye.
So Jimmy's aye as a vote. Next on the agenda, the applicant Arbor Recycling requesting site plan approval under section 9.3.11 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for wireless telecommunications facility at 174 Lester Street, map 39, parcel 30. They have also requested a continuance to our next meeting. We have a motion to approve the continuance.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Joanna?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Aye.
So Jimmy's aye as a vote. Next on the agenda, the applicant Arbor Recycling requesting site plan approval under section 9.4.11 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for warehouse at 47 49 Rockland Road, map 17, parcel 177, 224. This is my 9.3.20 side view. Is there anyone here representing Arbor Recycling?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton. Did you vote to vote in the hearing?
I did. What, are you?
Right. It's been a little bit of time since we've been back in front of you. Since we were last in front of you, I should say. Since that time, we've had the land disturbance permit approved. It hasn't been issued yet. Just has to pay the fee, according to an email from the DPW. So we've kind of checked that box, if you will. We had been waiting for Conservation Commission to get further along. And you may or may not know, but we met recently and, you know, DEP took a long time to issue the filing letter. Actually, I'm not even sure it's issued yet. But they did issue comments just prior to the last meeting.
Have they given you a number yet?
Yes. Yeah. I think it just came through, though, very, very recently. So we, we had been pausing because we just weren't sure what was going to come out of that. But it's just, this thing's been dragging on with your board for some time. And we don't see substantive material changes coming down the pike from that process. There may be, there may be small items to deal with. But it's our feeling that we're kind of to the end of the road of plan submissions and resubmissions. And, you know, since the land disturbance permit has been approved, I think we've kind of checked that box. So we're back in front of you, hopefully trying to close out the public hearing, and we can move on with the project. We do have to finish with Conservation Commission, but we're willing to take the chance that nothing material is going to...
We can make better conditions.
Yeah. It's just, this thing's been hanging around, and we don't have anything really material that's different to present to you tonight, so.
Anyone from the audience have any questions?
Could you just repeat that? Could you repeat that?
What I said, sorry.
Did you say you have no major changes yet?
For site plan purposes. We have to go back through Conservation Commission. And it's our feeling that there won't be material substantive changes such that we're, we are comfortable closing out the planning board process. I think the chair could tell you, but if there were material changes to come out of Conservation Commission, and they needed to be updated on the plan, we could file for an amendment. But otherwise, it could be conditioned, the planning board decision could be conditioned upon Conservation approval.
Correct.
John, did you look to see if they put oil and water separators and parking lot drains?
I didn't see it on the plan.
It's on the detail.
What's that?
It's on the detail sheet.
That's just a hood?
It's a collector.
You're talking about the EC780 isolator roll plus detail?
No, I'm talking about the catch basin, inlet detail?
Pardon?
The inlet detail?
The catch basin, that's what you're talking about?
Correct.
Where's your oil separator and everything?
There's an insert in there?
Yeah.
specification for an insert.
Your insert is a hood on the pipe.
The insert is actually a large bag that collects everything that goes through it and filters it and collects.
But it's a silt sack.
It's slightly different, but it's the same kind of idea. It's correct.
So...
So any oils that would reach there would be collected in there.
Yeah, how often is that maintained? It tells me that's going to...
It would have to be maintained there for every spill, if there were a spill.
You have to maintain it after every rainstorm.
There are, there are additional maintenance requirements in the SWF, like the specific oils, if ever spilled, would be collected and then would have to be, that would have to be replaced.
Okay, so what is the criteria of this bag insert that's going to absorb the oil?
There's a spec on there. And I can get, I can get the detail sheet and forward it to your office, but it's, there's a specification on the detail.
This, I don't know if it is accepted, whether or not it's accepted or not by the DPW. I'm not sure. Or the health department. I just want to be there for you.
I had asked several times for a standard oil and water separator that goes in all of our parking lots that we requested for the trucks and everything.
I've never seen this design.
Whatever.
That doesn't mean it's not good.
I have no idea.
You'd have to have a condition that DPW or our old DP, Valley and the health department will approve. That's all. I just never seen this design before. Valley definitely has a request.
John, I think we have a lady right here.
Have you seen this design in the wire?
I apologize. I just came in from the other meetings.
She probably didn't, she probably didn't hear the background.
So we're on Rockland Road with a, okay, and Ryan had brought up the question of whether or not they put an oil/water separator in the parking lot. I'm looking at this deep catch basin with an oil/water separator in it. I've never seen this design before. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, say yea or nay. I have no idea.
I know that one of my engineers had looked at some of this water infrastructure. I'm not sure if it's the same plan that you have at, in front of you.
Would you recognize the plan?
I might. I'm not sure. There's been a few revisions.
Make it up to you later.
I apologize.
Do we know when that detail was added? Was that the most recent revision set?
It's like a silt sack?
Mm-hmm.
And they say after every oil spill, if there is one, you just change the bag. I don't know who regulates that or keeps an eye on that. I've never seen that design before.
Mrs. Chusman?
Okay. I think I'd have to do a little bit more research into something like that just because of, you know, obviously maintenance concerns.
Correct.
So, yeah, I, I will take a look at that, and I can, I can send in a letter to the board.
We can make that a condition of approval.
Okay.
Whether or not I accept it. If you don't accept it, then you have to come up with something else.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That'll teach you to step, step into reading your not far.
So, back to my original question. The original hood on the F4 pipe, what kind of hood is it? It's not, it doesn't say Boston hood. It just says hood.
I was assuming it was maybe PVC. It's not specified. I can...
I'm not sure how it's attached. No detail in that, you know. Some of those plug into the bellend of a pipe. They pop out all the time.
Catch basin hood, Lebanon catalog. And there's a Lebanon catalog number.
It's a bear.
I'm sorry?
It's a bear.
Sorry, I'm reading a smaller.
It's all mine.
Oh, it's an ore equal, but absolutely, if there's a, if there's a spec or a detail...
If something doesn't exist, there isn't an ore equal.
I disagree.
It does not exist.
I disagree. Okay.
EJ bought...
Okay. Okay.
Bought them out, and they broke all the molds. So this hood does not exist. So it's EJ, Foundries of New England, or some other Nina Foundry or whatever, if it's cast iron. Now, if it's PVC or HDPE, I'm not sure which it is, I think it would be HDPE, because I think your pipeline's HDPE for your drain, correct?
Correct.
So I don't know if that's fused on, which would be fine.
Okay.
And, uh, or there's a bracket that comes with it, you post the oil catch basin, just so it doesn't fall off. Somebody opens the grate, drops something in there, no one ever notices. That's somebody puts it back on.
So, sorry, what is that called again? What's the piece you're talking about?
Hood.
Just the hood?
Sure.
So you're looking for an updated spec on the hood?
That'd just be a condition. Does anyone else in the audience have any questions regarding this whole project?
The whole project or just this?
We're doing the whole project, so I'll press it to the next.
We just, we have some, I say we, we have some concerns about, um, the property itself. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim Daley, 25 Rockland Road. We have concerns about the whole property itself. We're concerned that this has taken so long. Are we just dragging our feet? Are we not doing what we're supposed to, submit this a little bit, submit that a little bit, and now it's, it's almost two years? So every, every meeting we go to, it's, well, we, we didn't put this, we have to add that, we have to add that, and it's just going on and on and on and on. And it's turned, it's kind of turned into a circus. It's, it's nuts.
What happens is, a developer or an owner comes in, and they present the plan, and it goes to the DPW, DPW makes comments. So that comes to us, and if they haven't made, addressed the comments yet, then they have to address it and they have to come back. It also has to go up for peer review, and that has to come back, and then the peer review has to give them the problems they have. They have to respond, and then the peer review has to respond to that response. So that's why it's, it takes so long. It's not like a two-minute approval.
No, 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 it just seems like two years is not a long time.
It's called due diligence.
Okay. We do have concerns about the, about the property itself. I know at some of the meetings that, well, I've been to, um, it was discussed that show, you couldn't show lack of control over the property. That was, it's a different board meeting, it's a people show, like, I know Mr. Aaron made the comment that how do, how do we control the property?
What do you mean by control?
We have, you know, you can only have one private truck every hour. How do we control that? If you can only have fifty hours or seven to six, how do you control that? Um, lately, it's out of control.
What's out of control?
The trucks, the times, the whole process is completely out of control. And we have spoken to Gary a lot. He tells us to call in. We have, and unfortunately, I'm the one that did the traffic study, because we wanted to see what the road was like. And, um, we had nine violations in one day, just with private trucks. So there's no control anymore. We, we've met with the company, and we set up hours of operation, and we had different guidelines that we set up. They are not being upheld now. They're coming in at 7:15 in the morning, they're not supposed to be there till eight. Last Saturday, Mr. Chandler went up there at two o'clock, and they're not, and it's supposed to be eight to one on Saturday. At two o'clock, the truck is coming down. This morning, at 6:45, the box truck goes up. There's just, there's no control, and we've been up there multiple times, and the comment is just, I can't control, I can't control everything that goes on in the building. It is turned into, I just want to do what I want, when I want, because I can get away with it. That's what 47 to 49 Rockland Road has turned into. We have been, I speak for us, we have been very, um, I think diligent with, you know, if it's 6:59, we're not calling Gary. If it's, if it's 6:02, we're not probably calling Gary. But now that the, the discrepancies are getting more and more and longer and longer. You know, the, I don't know.
I thought during the week it was seven to six.
It is.
That's what it says here.
Seven to six, on Monday through Friday, eight to one on Saturdays. The gate is supposed to be closed. The gates closed, but they have a key, so that...
The truck drivers have a key?
So the truck comes down out of ours, pulls into the driveway or leaves it on Rockland Road, opens the gate, drives in, parks his truck, and goes home. So it's, it's just, it's honestly, it's, it's turned into a circus, and we have never complained, but now we're complaining, I guess. What else, you guys? What else? I just, there's, there's no lack of, I thought we had, at least would be able to work this out with them, we can't. We can't.
What, what happened?
Well, we met with, we met with Arbor, and we decided, we met with stipulations, and we discussed everything that we thought we could get, everything they thought they could get. And now, they're not going by anything. They're just doing what they want. And the truck traffic is, you know, at different times of the day, it's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, but your truck traffic, according to your study plan, at least your worries is traffic on Rockland.
I know that, I know.
You didn't do self, I'm going to tell you, you didn't do any self, you paid any care showing me how many trucks were going out of there.
And the problem is that, so I, we did the traffic study, and I, and I agreed, and we sat there and we were kind of feuding, because we thought, you know, the day was...
Be a lot more.
There's not many trucks. But then, we went, we left at 10 o'clock in the morning, and from, from 11 to 12:15, there was like 12 more trucks. I, I know I'm retired and I do have a life, but I can't sit out in my driveway and have my wife yelling when you're getting the house all the time, okay? I just can't do it. But, but I just think that it's just turned into do what I want, when I want, how I want.
I don't know how we go about making sure they abide by the seven to six and the eight to one.
I know.
I mean, like you said, 10 minutes to seven, okay.
Right.
10 after eight to one.
And we've never complained about that, and we've called Gary, you know, Gary says to call the 7719 and, you know, tell him what's going on, and we're doing that. But that has to end sometime. It, it has to stop, because we, we can't be calling, well, first of all, we're wasting your time. We're wasting the police secretary up there that has to take the message, or, you know, um, but there's just, I, I just needed to bring that up. In my last question, then, I know you guys have been here a long time already, but how do we, how do we get, when the, when the ZBA changed the hours from seven to six to nine to five total? There were some things that were left out, and I know that was an accident by the ZBA, but how do we get the things that we wanted back on the permit?
Like what things do you want?
Like, um, private trucks. Like the, yeah, like private trucks, like, um...
A lot of those trucks are private, they're independent contractors.
But they're only allowed one per hour. A coating, go ahead.
I don't know about that.
So that was part of the agreement?
Yeah, ours, no.
Agreed upon hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven to six, Saturday, eight to one. Non-Arbor recycling trucks are to arrive by appointment to limit the truck volume going to the site. This could be a condition added to the site plan decision that the board desired. You're saying about the number of trucks?
We agreed, we agreed, what for hours?
Point per hour.
Between nine and three or four?
Five.
Five.
I don't see that written anywhere, so I...
Yeah, I know, that's our issue, but, and, and the hours of eight to one on Saturday are not on that either. Well, they're on the original question, but the last, with the last, um, paper copy, it wasn't on there at all. What's that date?
Plan and board's condition if they want to add those hours. This could be the plan and board's condition to add those.
But Adam, to John's question, how, how would that be enforced?
Right.
It's the same, I'll tell you, it's the same way when you give somebody limits on construction.
Yeah.
Like down here at, um, medical facility at the Arbor Mall, their hours were seven to five, eight to 12. I drove by at 10 o'clock, and I understand blasting the outside of the building. What do I do?
That's our question.
You can't do that? Because the fine's only 200 bucks. Any contractor, hey, here's 200 bucks, I could save three days' worth of work.
But how do we prove it?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean...
Because he also agreed to no expansion of any kind, okay, in, in our meeting. We met with Gary.
Building expansion or business expansion?
Business. He said there would be no expansion, period, and then he applied for a truck washing permit. Well, to me, that's expansion.
I believe I got the night.
You did, but you still applied for it. You still tried to get away with it.
Oh, it's getting away with it, he's trying to maintain his vehicles, I mean, I don't think that's a huge thing to ask for.
If you had to put a building into washing?
You got a building, you drive a truck in.
So he's going to wash the trucks in the building?
No, he can't.
Okay.
Because he doesn't have the train, but I'm just saying.
I know, but...
I mean, what does it matter if he wanted to wash his trucks? I mean, the reason it was disapproved is because of environmental, it's not any else.
And how do we control that the gates are locked every day? I know, this, this is our dilemma, because who do we call?
I understand.
Who do we call?
Ghostbusters.
Exactly, because it, because if it's on a Saturday, I mean, are the hours...
Nobody's here in the town.
I'm sorry?
Nobody's here in the town to call, if it happens on a Saturday.
But if it's, if it's on, if it's written in, do we call the police?
Probably not advisable. If you have to call enforcement, I think to figure out our way to enforce the commission.
Who's co-enforcement?
The building commissioner.
Building commissioner? So he regulate that on the hours?
Try to.
Right, but how do we, how do we...
There's only, only one thing I can think of off the top of my head, now, just trying to think outside the box, is a time lock. It unlocks at seven o'clock in the morning, and automatically locks at six o'clock at night.
Because right now, right now, they're using a key.
Well, I know they...
I know.
I mean, they could put a motorized gate in where it opens by itself at seven o'clock, it closes by itself at six, same on Saturday. Opens at eight o'clock in the morning, closes at one o'clock in the afternoon. That's the only thing I can think of that would maybe help regulate that. I have no other, no other way, a thought that you could do that. Unless you have, you know, co-enforcement sit there all week long.
No, I mean, I, you guys have put enough time into this, but as far as I'm concerned.
That's what you do, huh?
And money, right, it's true.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, just a comment. I've watched a replay of the Conservation Commission meeting last week. Am I correct that they said that there wouldn't be any washing of trucks on the premises?
Correct.
Okay.
And we were under the assumption from the Conservation Committee that there's a lot more work than you guys are talking about tonight. Is that right or wrong?
Uh, they haven't moved the Conservation Commission yet, so...
They were.
No, we have.
They were, last week.
You still have to go back.
Correct.
So if we approve this tonight, we make that a condition, that they have to abide by all the requirements made by Conservation Commission? If that's more work, that's more work, but it's, it would be a condition of approval. So they have to do it, is what I'm saying. And the Conservation Commission will have to look at it, I guarantee you that.
So then, we could get the things that we wanted on the permit, we could get those added easily?
It's got nothing, on your permit, what you're asking for, it's got nothing to do with conservation.
I know.
So...
I'm asking you. How would we get everything, how would we need some of these things? This is what we just got, this is what we agreed to. How do we get it added?
You agree between him and the neighborhood, right?
Correct.
So who represented the neighborhood? Did you all go together and have a meeting together, or?
Yes.
Was the meeting recorded?
No.
Mr. Chairman, tho, those agreements were to be made a part of the zoning board appeal's decision, which, you know, I, I don't know who drafted it or how, how it came to be, but that was what was adopted by zoning board, which was supposedly the agreement as to hours of operation and the like. I, I don't think it's particularly, uh, appropriate for the planning board to try to rehash those at this point, or to condition your permit. It's already conditioned on the zoning board process, which we went through, which was an agreed-upon, you know, basically settlement at that point of what was agreeable. I wouldn't be amenable to you further conditioning this permit to try to rehash, you know, how many trucks per hour or something like that. It's, I don't think it's appropriate.
Your company, the company agreed to it?
But if it's been agreed upon...
It's not appropriate to condition a site plan approval with those types of conditions, especially when...
I can't condition on their private meeting, I can't.
Yeah, especially when zoning board already conditioned it that way, and you're, you're, I'm not going to get into the details, but they, we're not in agreement on the characterization of all the concepts that was just talked about. You know, it was mentioned one, one private truck per hour.
That was agreed to.
In your meeting?
That was, that was never discussed.
It was discussed, it was discussed.
I wasn't part of the private meeting.
You don't have to be.
As part of the record.
You don't have anything in writing, you don't have a contract signed or stamped, you know, with a Notre Republic, you have, you have nothing.
Gary, Gary was there, he represented the town.
Who was there?
Gary.
Building inspector.
He was there.
Okay.
With us. He agreed to it as well.
Did anybody take any meeting minutes? Where was this held?
In the town hall, up here.
Okay, from what room?
The, what was it, the little one? The little one, over there.
You mean the big room over there?
Oh, yeah, whatever that is.
Selective room.
It was this, it was, it was the CEO from the company.
Who was that?
It was Darlene, and it was the three in the neighborhood.
Was that recorded on, um, video or any email?
We had a gentleman's agreement, doesn't that mean anything?
But there was full discussion at the zoning board hearing after that, to lay out exactly what would be conditioned on their approval. Those items, you know, were part of the public record, and those are the items that we should be dealing with, not, maybe it was mentioned in a meeting at one point.
Right.
I can tell you that the one private truck per hour isn't workable. They, and especially where they've, they've agreed to schedule those private truckers during a more limited window.
Seven to six, I don't know.
No.
No.
No, the, the, the private are more limited, because we can schedule them, because they have to, they have to call, they have to get an agreement for them to come to our site.
Or appointment.
Right, they have to be by appointment, but that narrows the window, so yes, by its nature, you're going to have, those trucks are going to be in a more condensed timeframe during the day. That, that was the whole idea, not that it would be one per hour, I'm not sure where that came from.
That's tied in with that, of course.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that came from, but I, I don't think, you know, we're not a...
This is first hire of her tonight.
Well, we were at the property, we did a walk-through with Joe, and Joe showed us the sheet where he makes appointments, and he said it's one per hour.
That, that came from Kevin Kelly.
Okay.
All right. He said, "We will make sure that Joe keeps a log of one independent truck per hour between nine and five." Where all of, and they would have, somebody would take eight and 12 of their own trucks, working five days a week. And that was fine, but there's a heck of a lot more than eight to 12 trucks loaded in and out per day.
He had, he had a schedule on a clipboard that listed the hours, and he would check, and he checked them off, and the clipboard is full, we understand, okay?
You're talking about this Kelly guy, he works for...
Kevin, Kevin's the...
He's the CFO, the company.
Kevin's the CFO.
Right.
Okay, so...
He's the one that agreed to come up with that type of schedule, so that they could control the number of trucks coming down and up and down Rockland Road.
But again, you know, the, the zoning board was the appropriate place to condition the approval, their approval on this. This is site plan.
We can't do anything that the zoning board rules on. It's out of our purview.
So my question is, what does a gentleman's agreement mean? Nothing, if that's what you're telling me.
I have no idea, because I wasn't at the meeting.
I know you weren't.
Recorded, I don't know if anybody took meeting minutes. As far as, uh, legal standpoint, Todd could probably tell you better than me. If there's nothing signed, nothing in, uh, writing or video, I don't think it holds much weight.
Well, the eight, the eight to one on Saturday was when they, when there was a mistake by the zoning board, and they changed the hours from seven to six to nine to five by accident? Their eight to one was wiped out, because it was on there. It's on the, it's on the gate at the property.
They have it posted on their gate, the hours of operation.
Does it say eight to one?
Yes. It's right Saturday.
It's today.
It's seven to six.
Every day. As the gate opens and closes, the hours are right there, it won't say.
Do you have, do you have the decisions, Adam? I just didn't bring them with me. I, I believe the second, well, zoning board decision, was it, was it amended? Was there a decision and then they amended it?
Yeah.
Yes, they amended it.
But when they amended it, did they do a total restatement, or did they just amend certain provisions? But again, I mean, I guess, trying to say, this is zoning board stuff we're trying to rehash here at planning board.
It's zoning board purview, not much.
Right, we should be talking about the DPW approval of the water, oil-water separator and...
Correct.
The updated specs, updated specs for the hood that you want, like, that's what we should be talking about.
Correct.
But, but I asked if we could, and you, you agreed.
If you could what?
I could talk about anything putting through the property.
You can talk about anything, I mean, but there's only so many things that we have the ability to rule on.
I understand.
So when you bring up the zoning board, whether they missed something or didn't miss something, or put a typo in and didn't put a typo in, it's got nothing to do with the planning board. I'm glad, you know, that you brought it up.
So my question is, through the planning board, can we get 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday? So my question is, through the planning board, can we get eight AM to one PM on Saturdays put back on?
That is through the zoning board, that's not through the planning board. We just do site plan approval, roadways, drains, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Layout, that's it, plantings, relights, that stuff. We don't rule on hours of operation.
We don't.
I don't know how you, uh, regulate that. So, you know, it's seven to six and, you know, you open at seven, close at six, that's done. Or eight to one, open at eight, close at one, done. I, I don't know how you regulate that to make sure that they're buying by what they've agreed upon, or what the zoning board has allowed them to do, or given them the criteria.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know how you, to be honest with you, I'm baffled, I'm, how you get that enforced?
The seven to six.
What's that?
Seven to six.
Seven to six, eight to one, it doesn't matter, we don't set the hours of operation. That would be like, um, Adam said, that would be the code enforcement, so...
So we would have to go back to the zoning board and get it changed?
Don't know.
Okay.
And you could go to the zoning board, you didn't even ask that.
Okay.
I mean, I, I wouldn't, I don't even get into the zoning board or field stuff. Whatever they say goes, as far as that, but I mean, if you wanna add another amendment, you have to approach the zoning board and get it approved by them.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the audience?
Try Capelano Two Race Road on the mass, I'm in the butter. I've always been concerned about the Kettle Brook. That's why I'm here. I want to know what this town, what you're gonna do to prevent these trucks from driving off the pavement and getting on the grass on the side of the road.
The same, the same thing I can do on a public road, nothing. I have no, police to go down there and make sure they stay on the asphalt. Just like on a public road, if somebody drives off the public road, I have no jurisdiction over that.
Can't you, can't you request they put up a, a guardrail? So that they hit the guardrail with the trucks rather than go off? The reason why I'm saying that is because on the map...
The guardrail is a safety issue.
Or, or another map, they have the vegetation buffer control, which you already looked at, and the, uh, the, um, grass, grassed and buffer zone?
Yeah.
Grass, grassed waterway, section AA and AA and BB. If you look at those details, the asphalt is a couple of inches, a couple of inches from when they have that decline of slope. From the asphalt to the beginning of the slope on the vegetation buffer control, section AA. And that buffer, on the bottom of that buffer, there's a tree there, which is an arborvitae, which they're gonna plant. If you look at the, uh, it's three feet from the start of the slope to the centerline of the arborvitae. Now, they have many arborvitae, I think it's about seventy of them, I don't have any, eighty of them, all on the driveway, on the map, you see it right there. I'm on page, uh...
That was to screen the neighbors.
Three of four.
The arborvitae, they have to screen the neighbors.
I got it.
In the summertime, in the summertime, you don't really need to screen down there, you can't see the houses from the road anyway.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about a screen, I'm talking about they put arborvitae trees there. And that tree is actually three feet, three, three feet and some inches from the asphalt, from the vegetation buffer control net. We had a map up on the wall, I could show you what I'm talking about. So that little, that little depression there is only three feet wide. So if a truck goes off the asphalt, it's gonna actually be on coming down the vegetation buffer. So I'm asking for a, a guardrail so the trucks can't go down that slope. And the arborvitae trees, when they grow, they're gonna be probably maybe six feet diameter. Maybe six feet diameter, so three feet from that centerline is gonna sort of on top of that, um, depression.
If they drive over that slope on that side, there's no coming back, they're tipping over, I'll tell you that right now, it's a one to two slope.
Look, so what? Why, why, why is it gonna happen? Why are we letting it happen? I'm saying there should be a guardrail there so it can't go down the slope. Once it goes down the slope, it's over. Because they're gonna, they're gonna really screw up with the tires, the contour of that shape right there, and they're gonna hit the trees.
Well, they only have so many feet to work with on the Kettle Brook side.
Yeah, they only have so many feet to work with, and because they're using so many more trucks now, two hundred percent more trucks than I used last year, that's gonna be more of a, a challenge to try to keep those trucks on the road. What I'm saying is that they're expanding their business, and they're making it more likely that the trucks are gonna be driving off the roads more, driveway, driving off the driveway, it's not a road. So that's just the vegetation buffer.
Well, I'm looking at this private Rockland Road traffic study, okay? August fourth, seven AM to eight AM, five truck, uh, five trucks. Eight AM to nine PM, three trucks. Nine to ten, one truck. Seven to eight AM on the August fifteenth, seven. Eight AM to nine AM, six. Nine to ten AM. Seven. Uh, then you go to August twenty-first, you got six in the first hour, you got one in the second hour, and you got two in the third hour. That's not a lot of trucks.
Some days, there were twenty trucks.
An hour, or during the day?
During the day.
Twenty trucks the whole day?
Twenty trucks the whole day. That could be, now they, maybe they did, maybe they did ten trucks a year ago, but now it's twenty trucks.
A day.
A day, am I correct?
Yes.
Twenty trucks a day. And maybe that's just one way.
Weird or not, this has impacted the neighborhood.
There's two and a half trucks an hour.
My point is...
It's not a huge amount of traffic.
My point is, the business is expanding, there are more trucks using that driveway by a scale of a hundred percent, maybe two hundred percent some days.
Where do you, where do you get that figure? Where do you get a hundred to two hundred percent?
From...
I just counted the trucks you did the study on. It's not a hundred to two hundred percent. You barely got a truck going an hour. At twenty trucks a day, it's two and a half trucks an hour.
Twenty trucks.
That's not a huge amount of traffic in an eight-hour day.
So, we have twenty trucks going there occasionally on a day. How do we keep them on the asphalt? Because there is no buffer, there, there's no stopping a truck from going down that slope for the leg, for the vegetation buffer control system to work. This is a system that's been designed by the engineer. This is gonna work if it's gonna be maintained, and it's not gonna be maintained, because the truck is not gonna say, "Hey, I went over the backing a little bit."
On the plan for the right side, both sides of the road, I believe it is Cape Cod burn. And on the Kettle Brook side, there's a two-inch gap every so many feet for the water to be able to get off the road, correct? And that minute, and that goes into the three-foot, or whatever distance it is, to that little bucket, catch inside of it. And do the same thing on the other side of the road.
Well, on the other side of, excuse me, I'm sorry. On the other side of the road, you have the grassed waterway, section BD. That's on the, that's on the Brook side, well, it's on Brook side really. And that, that is, um, if you look at the plant engineering panel, it is as wide as this ruler. Twelve inches, and it's on, it's black on the drawing, twelve inches wide. Then that twelve inches, you have a gully, which comes down from the one edge, which is at the asphalt. It's not at any kind of a setback. At the asphalt, it's got twelve inches, and it goes down six inches to twelve inches. So it's not like a, a swale, it's a, it's a ditch. So if you take this thing and you come down this way with it and back up, they're gonna put grass seed in there.
Correct.
Right, to maintain it, but how are they gonna, how are they gonna cut the grass? Well, I'm with our...
Not my problem.
But it's, it's my problem, it's my problem.
How is it your problem if they don't cut the grass on their property? Tell me how it's your problem where they don't cut the grass on their property.
Because the water's gonna run out of this gully and it's gonna run directly into the Brook. That's what I'm saying to you.
No. The right side of the road has a Cape Cod burm the whole length.
Where's our burm?
Every so many feet, there's a curb cut, two inches wide. For any water that built up to go down and go through the grass strip there and all the vegetation between there and Kettle Brook.
There's a burm.
Yes, there is.
Uh, I don't see a burm on the map.
It's not on the detail, but it's on the plan.
Well, what plan? I got the plans right here.
It's on the...
What plan?
The chair had requested that be added to the details sheet, it's on the paving section. Federal Highway Administration...
I know, I read it somewhere.
Yeah, the Federal Highway Administration also has criteria for guide rail, and it depends upon the drop of the, of the swale next to the road. It has to do with the design speed and the distance. I'm certain we don't meet the criteria for guide rail, but if we do, I mean, we would look into it. I don't have, I was just searching for the chart, I can't find it right away.
I'm talking about the side of the road.
We do not meet the criteria for guide rail.
I didn't think you'd get it.
Federal Highway Administration.
You're gonna drop off.
It's not a big enough drop, and it's not a high enough speed.
So we've got some tape, maybe we can tape the map up on that whiteboard here, and I can point out what I'm talking about.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not sure where we're going with this.
Where, where we're going with it is, uh, I wanna know why we were allowing trucks to drive on that pavement without any protection for the water being running off that road. That's where we're going with it. And if the water gets in that little...
So where's the protection on Rockland Road when somebody drives off the road? There's no protection on Rockland Road.
Ho- hopefully you have sidewalks, hopefully you have, uh, curbstones.
Hopefully there's a sidewalk on Rockland Road.
I don't know, I'm, I don't, you know...
You said you're in a butter, you should know whether there's a sidewalk or not on Rockland Road.
I have in a butter, but you mean I lived there.
Both sides or one side? Yeah, so the other side, guy drives off the road, who maintains that? Who's gonna make sure that stays on? Who's gonna make sure that the...
The town of Auburn, the town of Auburn's gonna maintain that road.
Yeah, but then I gotta put a guardrail in so nobody runs off the road.
I didn't ask the town of Auburn to put a guardrail in on Rockland Road, I'm talking about this property right here.
I'm giving you an example. They don't...
And in order for them to continue with the trucks, I'm saying there should be a guardrail to protect the water, to protect that side of the road near the Brook. The other side of the road, those are other rebutters over there, maybe they don't care. But I care about the Brook, because whatever happens to that Brook affects my property. And, and if it happens to the Brook with water, with oil going in there, when the arborvitae shed and the needles fall down on that grass, which is one foot wide under the arborvitae, there's gonna be no more grass there. Who's gonna clean up the needles in the, in the gully? Nobody.
Who cleans up the, leaves the whole slope? Nobody. Who cleans up the vegetation from the edge of that road at Kettle Brook? Nobody. You're getting ridiculous.
I'm not ridiculous.
You are ridiculous.
If, if they want...
Arborvitae, when they shed, they drop mostly inside the bush itself and sometimes at the bottom. It's not the whole width of the, of the gully. And don't ask me how I know, 'cause I have twenty of them in my yard, that's how I know.
You're gonna, you're gonna have it at the grip edge of the tree.
I'm done, I'm done. I'm done, we're going, getting way off the beaten path here.
Well, it says...
Way off the...
It says plan, it doesn't say conservativity plan, it says site plan, and it says, uh, stormwater management plan. I'm at a planning board, and you're not even talking about what I'm talking about. You're dismissing me as if it's irrelevant.
I'm not dismissing you, I think you're going overboard.
I'm not going overboard.
You are going overboard.
Why aren't you concerned about a truck going off the road, off the driveway? Why aren't you concerned?
It's a private drive.
It should be made...
It's just like you tell them they can't have so many trucks a day, one truck an hour. You can't do that, you can't regulate commerce in this town, just 'cause you say so and you're in a butter. It doesn't work that way.
All I'm saying is, I should have protection for that Brook. And they have, another thing is that I'm concerned about is the snow dump. And now, don't tell me that's conservation, because they're gonna have, they're gonna have to get rid of the snow on that five-hundred-foot driveway. How are they gonna apply that? Are they gonna push the snow off to the sides? You don't know, you don't care.
It's on the...
Well, first of all, don't tell me I don't know, and don't tell me I don't care, 'cause if you say that again, you're out of here, understand?
I apologize.
You should.
I apologize.
So if they plow the road, I don't know what they're gonna, they're gonna plow it off to the side, or come in with a catch thing, like they do in the parking lots, and dump it down in their big lot. I've driven into that site, and they keep that lot very neat down at the site, it's very neat, and it's very clean.
How do they do it?
What's that?
How do they do it?
How do they do what?
He's right here, how do they maintain it?
How do they maintain what? Feast of food?
What you were talking about, the snow, the flowing of the snow.
Yeah.
How, how do they currently maintain it?
I don't know how they currently, currently...
Sitting right here.
I have no idea, but I can tell you right now, if they plow the road in the current conditions, they're putting dirt over the side. If they plow it in the new conditions where the road is paved, you're not gonna get the dirt over the side going to Kettle Brook, you're gonna get snow, period.
And yet, they're being allowed to operate with those conditions.
What do you mean, operate?
Operating the business.
You're gonna stand up and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Eric Paul Street. They're currently operating the business, aren't they done? And so they're maintaining the road, and the road has got none of the improvements currently. They're sitting right here, and they say they're gonna pave the road and they're gonna put these protections in. Ask them, what are you gonna do with the snow?
Mr. Chairman, I'd point out that there are snow storage areas on, to note it on the plan, and also, your DPW department, and the assistant town engineer in particular spent a lot of time on...
Yes, they did.
The curb cut, you know, the curving issue, on the swale issue, et cetera. Which was all, all led to the major land disturbance permit submissions and resubmissions and reviews by them and by Graves Engineering. So, I, I mean, to, to me, we're sort of way past the point of rehashing, you know, what the road should look like, I mean, we've done, you know, we've did what you asked on depth and...
Correct.
And, and the like, and we've satisfied DPW and Graves Engineering on the technical items they wanted regarding stormwater...
Correct.
And erosion control, and, I mean, we've been, this is why this has taken so long, quite frankly, is we've done a lot of work on those elements.
Erosion control is basically regulated by Conservation Commission. I mean, we, we do look at it.
Right.
But the Conservation Commission, you still have to go to the Conservation Commission, you get this plan approved, and that's with the swales and all that stuff, that's out of my purview, that's their purview. That would be a condition on the approval here, or disapproval, whatever happens. That the Conservation Commission has to go along with everything you're doing, or tell you what you gotta do.
Correct.
And then you get to turn in an asphalt over town, okay?
Correct.
Right, correct? So, anyone else have any comments?
Please.
Tom Franklin, you scored in for the town, I'm here on my own time, I was at the conservation meeting, and...
Thanks, Tom.
After the meeting, I sent an email to this board regarding, we did get, uh, a DP file number and comments at eleven thirty on Wednesday, the day of the meeting, and Mr. Franklin isn't kind enough to respond to that at six seventeen that evening, and the meeting here was at seven o'clock, so after the meeting, I was able to go look at my email and the file and comments. Uh, but one of the things of concern is, there's a comment in here asking if the subservice storm tech system has an outlet. If so, the location of the outlet, required outlet scour protection should be shown on the plans. Also, the proposed elevations of the system components should be shown on the plans, and the applicant should verify that the system will drain completely within seventy-two hours of a precipitation event. completely within 72 hours of a precipitation event. And looking at that, that to me would be a major concern for the planning board. I didn't know if the members here were able to look at that.
I haven't had time to be honest with you.
Yeah, and it's, it's one of those things, I mean, it got put through late, so like I was able to look at it today, I came back to work today, I was off Thursday and Friday on my anniversary and that was one of the things, so I did make copies, this is basically the same document that I sent to you guys Wednesday night.
So as far as the outlet for the storm scepter system, that requirement would probably be ripramp.
Well, if the system were to fill up and overflow, it would bubble out of the trench drain or the inlet basin.
And where it goes would be down the hill, correct?
That's correct.
So you have to put ripramp there preventing.
Well, the.
Or some way, some type of.
It would, it would go down, end up going down the road wherever it might go.
Eventually it's gonna go to the brook.
Correct.
So, this is way down at the beginning of the, down by the building, if I'm not mistaken, the.
The system is in the parking lot.
Correct.
And when the, the system has a trench drain and a catch basin associated with it, water flows into that, fills up the system. If the system were to surcharge, it would bubble out those two inlets.
And when that goes directly?
Then it would overflow down the road and then ultimately into those shoulder areas that we talked about, into the vegetated swales and then ultimately into the road.
So, if it goes down the road, it's only gonna vacate the roadway wherever there's a two-inch curb cut.
Correct.
And I would assume eventually that it may even flow backwards if the storm stops, it starts to subside, the water starts going through the system again.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yes, but the system is high enough elevation-wise that I would doubt it would back up that, that far, we're talking about a surcharge of the two-year storm.
Location of the outlet, required scour protection should be shown on the site plan, so I don't know what you're gonna do for scour protection, I don't know what scouring it would be through a two-inch slot or.
Right, I was going, I was only gonna point out that we're gonna be stabilizing those areas through pavement.
So, forgive me for my chit-chatting here, but verify the system drained completely within 72-hour precipitation event. Does that include a hard-year storm or is that just a regular precipitation?
That's the, the two-year event and surcharging the system, I did check that calculation, I haven't presented, so they just got this comment. So the, the perk rate is .07 inches per hour, which is very slow, and that's the reason for the comment. So what the solution would be, we'd have to overexcavate the bottom of the system and backfill it with a permeable material, and I'll specify the material spec which meets that criteria, but that has not been done, just got that comment last week.
Just fine.
And, and just by the way, the detail already presented on the plan calls for an engineered backfill, so it's just a matter of me injecting into that detail in the specification perk rate and the soils.
That would need to.
Be in that strat above.
Correct, so as far as the perk rate goes and all that, that's Conservation Commission and stuff playing, whatever, if I'm not mistaken. But absorption of the ground is not our purview, but I mean, that would be part of the condition that.
Right, it's a comment, and it's a valid comment and the response is that I have to come up with a different subbase material.
So your, your response to the overflow of the system is it goes down the road and it finds a two-inch gap's cut in the Cape Cod broom and drains slowly out?
Right, well specifically, I think the comment had to do with, well, what's gonna happen at the point of overflow?
Right.
And my, my point is that.
Stayed untouched.
It's gonna be paved, but to further your point, eventually, yes, it would ultimately run down the road and then through those gaps that we just talked about.
And the same with the roadway itself.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions from the audience?
I just wanna.
Sure.
Just wanna, yeah, did you say that there's a broom on, yes, side of?
Cape Cod broom on the brook side, yes.
Is that shown somewhere on a map?
I think it's in the, it explains it in the detail, I believe, on one of the details.
It's on the pavement detail.
It says two-inch cut every so many feet to allow the water to escape from the roadway.
On the detail page?
Correct.
Just wanna make sure. This is, this is along the side of the road near the bridge, right? Am I in the right place?
It's on the side of the road, it's Kettle Brook.
I must have, I must have it on map, David, uh, 9-4, I don't see it.
It's sheet, sheet one.
Can you show me where that is, you have a map there?
It's in the detail sheet, isn't it?
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Thank you. Proposed entry road section.
Proposed entry road section. It shows a modified Cape Cod broom and has a two-inch gap and curb every 100 feet along the road entry, entry road, which is the whole length of the driveway.
Thank you.
This is also on David Knight. Thanks for the work.
Mr. Chairman, Al Rafferty, Paul Street, again, is it worth my time to discuss making that driveway a two-lane?
There isn't room.
For safety purposes.
You're wasting, there isn't room.
There's no room with the current property they own, however, there are buddies that could possibly sell property to them to make it a two-lane, and my question is, isn't a two-lane, I mean, how many businesses in town have you approved where there is one lane going into the business, in and out?
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't tell you.
Do you think of any? Have you approved the one-lane entrance and exit for any businesses, all the board members through the chair, all the board members, remember approving such a thing? It doesn't make any sense logically.
Anybody on the board?
No.
So this was established back in 1968.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
It's also upheld in 1997.
I understand that, but they're new owners and so new code comes into play.
No, it doesn't. All your new code could be ADA compliance.
Well, when, when they bought the property, they've had to adhere to building improvements under the code.
Correct, they have to upgrade the building.
Now, you're also asking them to improve the driveway up to a certain code.
Correct.
So there you go, so I'm saying two lanes would appear to me to make, make more of a safety sense.
Okay, so just for an example.
Yes.
They approached all the homeowners on the homeowner's side opposite Kettle Brook and they all say no, can we shut them down on the business?
Well, sir, it goes back to why they were allowed to move in and operate the business without getting any of these plans approved, no licenses, no permits, just a.
It's got nothing to do with the planning board, nothing to do with the planning board.
Oh, I understand, it has to do with the town.
Go to the selectmen or DPW or code enforcement, that's where you take that to, I'm not gonna waste my time with that here, time, we're already wasting enough time.
Well, I'm just answering the question and the answer is that what they, if they go and they say they won't sell the property, well then I guess they can't operate the business there. And they made the mistake of buying the property and moving in before.
I don't think there's a town regulation that says you have to have a two-lane road in and out of a business.
So, so in the future, you'll be conducive to allowing one-lane entrances and exits to like a company.
Handle on the case, you'll be handling the case by case basis, just like this one.
Oh, okay, so on a case-by-case basis, let's consider these people probably needed two lanes, there's, there's good arguments for it. Safety-wise, they can't see as they're going up the road, if you've got one truck coming down and one truck going up, they may have to have a, one might have to back up, which is a safety hazard. If, if there's a fire and an ambulance has to go up and there's a truck coming down the road at the, how are they gonna do it? Second, if somebody's having a heart attack or something, so it just makes perfect sense, why isn't there two lanes for, for sight and for safety? And it would also, I would imagine it would be better operating conditions for the business because it's like, what are you, you're gonna have people back up all the time because one guy.
Did no man tell you what's gonna happen if we make that a two-lane road? Do you think the traffic in and out of it is bad now? Be 400 trucks a day, then where do we go?
I, I tend to doubt that because there's so many trucks that can fit on that property, Mr. Chairman, so they could only expand so far.
If they go in and dump their load and leave, done, they're out.
Well, they usually don't leave, I believe they drive in and they park and they, and they remain.
Burial's processed and they leave. So I don't know how many guys leave their truck there, I don't know how they get home, I believe there's a shuttle from the building to the houses, you know, so I believe they drive in and drive out, that's my personal opinion, they're not gonna leave the truck there, maybe they have a trailer there, they're not gonna leave it, the tractor there, they're gonna drive out. So you're talking two-lane road, 400 trucks a day, and then where do we go? You're gonna complain about that, I mean, this was approved, this variance was approved as, like I said, in 67, 68, it was upheld in 77, may have held in 97, it's been used in and out as a one-lane road since 1969, I believe, and it's kinda like grandfathered in, I believe, but I'm not positive about that.
Well, that road was, that road was put in place because the original.
I know, went out the mainstream, they filled it in.
That's right, and they changed it.
That's got nothing to do with me, that's way before my time, I can't change history.
Well, I know, but you just brought up history, so I'm, I'm.
I'm just saying that it's been in there so long, they've been using it for so long.
You brought up the history, so I was arguing your point, now you don't wanna argue your own point.
What's my own point?
That historically they have a right to do this.
Correct.
And I said that originally, the original access was changed and a driveway was put down and there's, there seems to be certain evidence that that never should've happened. That, and bear in mind, they're operating now on a road that doesn't have all the new designs to replace, and yet they're being allowed to operate, are they polluting the stream? You bet they are, okay?
How do you know they're polluting the stream? Where's your proof?
I, I.
They have sanitation fences up, they have the wattles up, so how are they contaminating the brook? They're not contaminating the brook any more than.
They have the oil water separators in place?
No, because they don't have any asphalt down.
Oh, okay, so then maybe pollution is occurring, you're requiring all those changes and yet they're not in place, so ergologically, you're concerned that pollution is taking place, if those aren't in place, they're not in place, so ergo the contamination is happening.
Ergo, this is, that's the conversation, that's the Conservation Commission's purview, not mine.
Oh, absolutely, I don't know.
Well, then talk to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, well, I, like I said, I don't know how we got into that, I was talking more about the two-lane and the safety concern.
You got into the pollution and all that.
What's really surprising to me is if the business really wants to grow and develop like most businesses, why aren't they arguing for a dual-lane?
'Cause it costs a lot of money and they've been doing this one-lane since 1969 or whenever they started using that part of the roadway, so I don't know what to tell you, I really don't know what to tell you, I can't tell when they have to put in a two-way roadway, two-lane road, if the, if the DPW, DPW doesn't make them or, I don't know who else would make them, it wouldn't be me, or the board, but they're doing all these improvements, they're putting the curb in on both sides of the road, they're putting the curb cuts in on both sides of the road, they have the erosion control in now, which will have to stay there until the grass is grown, until the arborvitae's are planted on both sides of the road, they have snow storage down there, they have an oil-water separator down there, they made an enormous amount of improvements here from where they started, you can't argue that point, 'cause they have, they're gonna be making it, so they need approval.
Yes, they have, but they've been required to do that.
Correct.
Before, before they were required, they weren't doing any of it, by the way, the erosion.
Well, neither was the last, I didn't hear anybody, see anybody before the planning board when the last business was in there or the business before that, the business before that, usually there's a one-lane road or pollution to the, pollution to the brook, where was everybody then?
Well, that's history, we really can't.
Oh, no, now we can't talk about history, you just blew your own point, I'm done, we're done, we're done, we're done.
Okay.
My God.
Can I ask one final question?
Shoot, can't.
And then I promise I'll go home. If this was done the correct way, would we still be here after two years?
Every time somebody tries to approve something, there's gonna be different requirements from different avenues and like I said before, like I said before, they come in with a plan, we say you gotta do this, we send it off for peer review, peer review, reviews, which takes time, they send it back, the contractor or the engineer makes his comments, it goes back to the peer review, so they have to, I'll look at their responses, they don't agree to the spot responses, which in this case they did in all of them, it goes back to the engineer, then it goes back to, it's back and forth thing.
I understand, but shouldn't you have had the plans a long time ago? Because they were digging on the property way before they had plans, way before they had anything.
I don't know that.
I know, I'm just, I'm just asking them, if they, the process should be what? Go submit a plan, get a building.
Well, first you gotta get a land disturbance permit, which they have.
Which they have now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Once they got, we got written up, it's, they've been cited for that several times, it's been fixed, they've taken care of that.
That should've happened a long time ago, right? Oh, no, I'm trying to understand the process, 'cause I'm not sure this is.
Well, two years is a long time.
It is, it is, and I, I don't know, I don't know, it just seems like.
Filed with the planning board in February.
Excuse me?
Filed with the planning board in February.
Right.
The zoning board was before that.
Correct.
But we don't file with the planning board until we finish with zoning board.
Correct.
That took a long time.
I understand.
Because of discussions and negotiation.
It just seems like you, I don't know, put the cart before the horse, that's what it seems like.
I see a lot of projects in town take a lot longer than this, way longer, because of, like Todd said, you go to the zoning board, they make the plan, then you come back, you make negotiations, you come back and forth, then they come before the planning board, we see stuff on the plan, which we saw the first time around, I made my comments, these guys, gentlemen, made their comments, it's back to them, goes to peer review, it all takes time.
Okay, so through the board, I have a question for Todd, if we can, if we can prove that we had those discussions with the town, would you agree that we could change the permit?
I'll have to talk to Kevin, the client.
That's who, okay, that's who gave it to us.
Is that it?
That's my question, I mean, we can.
I said I would talk to the client, not, can't agree to anything right now.
Okay, 'cause we've talked to Kevin many times, so, okay, that's all I want to know.
Okay.
Thank you very much, your time.
You got a question?
And then I just, I don't wanna do any conditional approvals, I'm waiting till I get everything on the plan that they're supposed to have.
We have everything on the plan that we need, the only condition would be the Conservation Commission.
When they got everything there and we got that full set of plans with everything on it.
Right.
Then we can.
I only have one other comment and that's on the arborvitae's, they can't be planted seven feet apart, arborvitae's are only planted three feet apart, they're also planted in staggered motion, the reason they stagger the motion is, you have a line, you have one solid line, the trees tend to come down, if they're staggered, they tend to support each other, that's all, every three feet and staggered.
So twice as many percent, approximately.
Three feet on center, John?
Three feet on center and seven.
Approximately.
Okay.
Are they on both sides of the road right now?
What's that?
On both sides?
No.
Where, where is it right now?
Plant an arbivite hedge and plant them in a zigzag.
So three feet on center, zigzag. Understood.
It's three feet.
Yep. Yep. Uh, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
A second.
All who's in favor, John.
Aye.
Myself, Johnny's aye is a vote. May I have a motion to approve the plan as submitted based on the conditions of what's required by the Conservation Commission, which they have to go back to. And they have to turn in ads built of what they've done to make sure that it's been done. I'm sure the highway department will be out there looking at what's going on out there. We don't inspect, but I'm sure they will probably send somebody out. Julian will probably send somebody out, see how things are going.
So you're saying a conditional approval?
Conditional approval based on the Conservation Commission, which is out of our purview.
It's a standard condition. Those are standard conditions, I would say.
What's that?
Those are standard conditions.
Yeah. We've done that many times. Based on the Conservation Commission.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All who's in favor, John?
Aye. Aye.
Ron?
No.
Aye.
Myself, Johnny's aye is a vote.
Thank you very much.
No one in the business? All signed your signature on two eighty-four South East Street?
Okay.
Uh, I'd like a motion to approve the meeting minutes of nine twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. Gentlemen? Gentlemen, can you please go out and close the doors uninterrupted, please?
Um, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
As amended.
As amended.
All who's in favor, John?
Can I vote? Yeah.
Yeah. One more.
Yeah. Aye.
What?
Aye.
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 Myself, Johnny's aye.